All is being ordered. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise, don't speak for agents. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome all of our friends and neighbors and colleagues in joining us in this regularly scheduled October 2nd, 2023 City Council meeting. As you come in tonight, if you're a guest with us, which would be to my right, to everyone else's left, there's a set of double doors. Uh, right past those doors, there's a desk. On that desk, there's a sign-in sheet. If you're a guest with us tonight, please sign in. City Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Morrissey.
Here.
Palladino.
Here.
Pratt.
Here.
Sharp.
Here.
Soha.
Present.
Stuccio.
Here.
Veer.
Here.
Wolfram.
Here.
Mayor Stockburn.
Here.
All present, mayor.
Thank you, Katie. We'll move into approval of agenda. City Manager, any members, council, have any changes they'd like to see made to the agenda tonight? Councilman Soha?
If I may, Josh or Tony, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but um, I know we have this to discuss tonight about the legal fees, but during the Public Services Committee meeting, it's on page twenty-five of the packet, there was a recommendation that I failed to emphasize to the City Clerk when she published this. The City Feels They Would Like To Forever Encourage Historic Parades in the Downcom Corridor requests full council to revert to the old fee schedule for special events only, remove labor for barriers and traffic control until uh, Public Services um, can further discuss it. I wanted to add that in the old business. I thought we were going to, but um, City Manager said we might be discussing it and have it all here. I didn't know if we wanted to add it as a line item in the old business.
Are there any parades, events happening between now and the next meeting, since it would be a late addition? I don't think so. Anybody's aware of? City Manager?
The trains, that's.
So, do you think we could wait till the next meeting to do it? That way the public could have an opportunity to look at it? I mean, there's no victim, no crime if uh, if there's no events between now and then. Councilman Veer?
Yeah, it had to do with the uh, lineup parade coming up in, I think it's first December.
Yeah.
Yeah, December, so.
Yeah, you can wait. And that's, that's how the conversation got spurred. I just want to make sure, you know. Is that okay with you guys?
Absolutely.
Okay, alright.
The uh, the organizers were simply wondering if they were gonna be able to move forward with it though, right, at the current fee schedule, so they did wanna have some advance notice, but they got, they have two months, so.
Yeah, yeah. If we send the next packet and gives them a solid two months and it gives the public an opportunity to, to uh, know that it will be on the agenda and come up here and have input if they so wish. Does that sound fair, Tony? Anything else?
I just had a question. This was on the issue of being, uh, doing what with the Dome Theater, having a community event, right? Is that, is that what we were talking about?
Having some sort of community event that would be affected by the current fee schedule between now and the next council meeting. We've got a motion on the floor from Councilman Soha to approve the agenda.
Sorry?
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Veer to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Alright, we'll move into public comment on agenda items only. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. Please limit your comments to three minutes and understand that this is public comment on agenda items only, so whatever you're speaking on needs to have a direct tie to something that's present on the agenda tonight. The podium's now open.
Good evening. Andrew Gelsner, Ward Four. I'm here to speak to you in reference to the Kiefer House Hotel Oprah Amendment. I've been here to encourage you, both my capacity as a resident and a downtown business operator and the chairperson of the Tiffle Board, to grant this renewal. I'm here and make myself available for questions when it comes up on the agenda. There are two gentlemen from C L Real Estate here to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Any more public comment?
Hi, I'm Kevin Conant. And uh, we're, we're uh, doing the Scarecrow Fest, October thirteenth. And so this is in direct correlation to the fee schedule. And uh, Fleech has already put down our deposit for it, but um, I'm just curious if it can be retroactive if this gets reversed for, for a charity event?
I don't know the answer to that, can I? City Attorney?
Yes, you would have the ability to adjust the fee schedule for things that had not occurred yet, but that we're going to determine that um, you wanna make a change to it. So yes, you could make it apply to anything for which someone has already filled out.
Yeah, 'cause we already submitted everything to make sure we got.
Submitted their application and all the other materials, but you were going to reduce the fees to match with the whatever change you might have made or increase them. I would generally point to do it. You could make that, uh, and it's easier if it's a reduction to make it retroactive, right?
Thank you, City Attorney.
Alright, question answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Any more public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll close the podium. We'll move into the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we've got approval of bills, city and V P U claims, September fourteenth, payroll of September fourteenth, we've got city council minutes of September eighteenth, finance minutes of September eighteenth, public service committee minutes of September twenty-fifth. Then there's a noise variance for the Scarecrow Festival, the street use agreement, Hillsdale Brewing Company for the Scarecrow Festival, and a ratification of the mayor's signature for the Emery Lot Closure Agreement. Is there any discussion on any of these items in the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion on the floor from Councilman Mor- Morrissey, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt. May I have a roll call, City Clerk?
Councilmember Palladino?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Veer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Stockburn?
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
All approved.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, we'll move into communications petitions and just give me one moment, please, to get caught up in my packet here. First item in communications petitions is the Sixteenth Annual Walk Over Members, and this is uh, Sunday, October fifteenth, at Owens Park Pavilion. Um, this is uh, Pregnancy Loss Walk, so I encourage everybody to do it ten minutes. Is there any discussion on this? A good event. Uh, item letter B is Mitchell Research Center Summer Fall Newsletter. It's got the president's report on it, as you guys have all seen. The doors have been refinished, which looked lovely, and there's exciting stuff happening at the Kiefer, and I feel really good about their future. Mitchell. Well, it, it appears there's exciting, exciting stuff happening at the Kiefer right now, too, so. Any discussion on this item? Okay, item letter C, the train event is back again, October seventh and eighth. That's eleven thirty a.m. to three p.m. Featuring food trucks, uh, farmers markets the same day as the seventh event, and on the eighth, artwork and free art show at the Dome Theater, so really cool stuff there. Any discussion on this item? Sam, did you wanna add something to that, my friend?
Yeah, we'll just, I'll just say we really encourage folks to come out for that. It's a two-day event. The train's gonna be bringing four hundred and fifty to five hundred passengers to our downtown both days. Um, as with previous events, city staff working with, you know, some of our local businesses have put together quite an event. Um, we're gonna have the farmers market down there on Hillsdale Street. We will have several of our local food trucks, and many of our businesses and restaurants will be open as well. So there's just gonna be a lot of stuff going on, and we really encourage everyone to come on out and support our local businesses and see what's going on in downtown Hillsdale.
Thank you, Sam. Any questions for Sam while he's at the podium? Thanks, Sam. Okay, item letter D, citywide hydrant flushing, October first, which was yesterday? Begins yesterday.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Um, just to say that uh, it usually takes about a week for them to get completely through the city. Um, but we have been receiving some calls, um, that they might see rusty water, so if they run, run their water bit, um, that will clear up. But uh, they started late last night and have been flushing. They run twenty-four hour shifts to get that done.
Awesome. Did you have a question, Councilman Veer?
Yeah, just for a second, Dave, uh, why they start on Sunday? As opposed to like a Monday?
They start late at night because they'll run, they'll run twenty-four hours, so. To try to, they, they start late at night in order to try to um, have less disruption in traffic because a lot of, they're blowing that water into the streets.
Any other discussion? Alright, so we'll move into item letter E, M I F E G Grant Award. Dave, can you give us a roll?
So this was a grant that um, the city applied for. Chief Hepner, Sam, and myself had worked on, um, it's a ten thousand dollar grant to offset fire equipment expenditures. Um, if you don't recall, not so long ago, we had ordered uh, turnout gear, and so this grant was kind of a repayment grant, so we had to demonstrate that we spent the money in order to get the grant funds. Uh, and, and the, the highest amount they awarded was the ten thousand dollars, so um, we're just pleased that we were able to, to get those funds.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions for Dave about this? Good job, Dave, and Chief. Did you say Sam, too?
Yep, Sam, Sam with the right.
Alright, good job, Sam. Thank you. Alright, well, does anybody have anything about communications petitions as a whole? Alright, we got no introduction, adoption of ordinances or public hearings tonight, so we'll move into old business, core coil I F T abatement.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Um, Drew Homovec, who had, was here last year, had contacted us today. He is ill. Couldn't make it tonight. So we would like to ask that council table this item to the next meeting. We have one more meeting that we can do this, make this decision at. So if we could get council to table this to the next council meeting, then uh, Mr. Homovec can be here to answer his questions directly.
Sounds fair. Councilman Morrissey?
Uh, I assume our city attorney has looked at this letter that he sent us, talking about the different things that he's done. Could you?
I have not.
Okay, well.
I've been asked to do that.
Do I hear, do you, do you think they've, uh, for him to review that letter that was sent to us by this gentleman?
Yeah, that will, that will be fine.
Because it seems to be something that is intended to uh, uh, prepare for a possible litigation. So I think we should take a look at it.
Well, he is still in, uh, you know, we'll ta- we're gonna table this.
Right, I know.
He is still in litigation, and he brought this up last year. And he was um, in litigation over a roof issue, um, which apparently is still ongoing.
Yeah, but there's a lot in here beyond that, so.
Correct, correct.
So I, it would be, I think it would be good if the attorney took a look at it between now and the next meeting, possibly.
Yep.
Move to table.
Support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha to table, uh, item A in old business, core coil I F T abatement, uh, until the next meeting, which would be October the sixteenth. And seconded by Councilman Sharp. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll take a look at that at our next meeting. Alright, we're on to item B in old business, extension of traffic control order two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-nine. Chief?
Good evening. Uh, by ordinance, a temporary traffic control order is valid for ninety days. Once I issue it, any extension on that has to be at the approval of council. Um, which you can extend the temporary, turn it into permanent, any discretion, or dissolve that. This is for the four-way stop at Fayette in Northwest Street, uh, where uh, stop signs with the LED markers were put for northbound and southbound Northwest Street, making that a four-way stop. The reason why we're requesting to continue the temporary until May first, the initial concerns were for northbound traffic going up the hill to the stop, especially regarding uh, winter road maintenance, to see if the current plan was going to work, if you were the third or fourth car back on the hill stopped, if there were gonna be any issues. So we wanted to get through basically all four seasons under this temporary traffic control order, be able to do a full evaluation, to come back and make a recommendation to make it permanent, or if something else needed to be done there. So this is our request for you to approve extending the temporary to May first of two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, Chief. I, I like the four-way stop. I do. I don't know if everybody else has had experience with it, but I think it's working out well. Any questions for the Chief?
I have a question, but I do think that it also the other advantage is that you get through the whole school year, and that's another consideration.
See, see what, see what the traffic is throughout the whole school year. That's good.
Very good. Any questions for the Chief? Thank you, Chief. Entertained a motion to uh, extend the traffic control order?
So move forward.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Veer, to extend traffic control order two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Alright, we'll move into item C in old business, Kiefer House LLC Oprah Resolution Amendment Request. Sam?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So back in April twenty nineteen, uh, the city council approved an obsolete property rehabilitation certificate um, for the Kiefer House Hotel project. That certificate is still ongoing. The resolution that was passed at the time required that the facility rehabilitation should be complete by December thirty of two thousand twenty-one. There have been a number of delays on the project, and, and we have Grant uh, here representing the developer. He can share some more about that, um, but also the progress that they're continuing to make. What we're looking for tonight from city council would be to amend the resolution um, for that certificate to um, include August first of two thousand twenty-four as a new project completion date. Now, why it's important that we do this is because currently that certificate is valid, but the state tax commission basically reviews and oversees Oprahs, and so at any point, um, currently, they could come back and choose to revoke that certificate uh, without you guys having the ability to have any say in that. So we're simply looking to update the paperwork and make sure that everything is, is in compliance there um, based on a request from the developer. So um, at this point, if you guys have any questions about the project, I'll invite Grant to come up and, and he can address that. Um, if you have any questions about the resolution, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Sam. Any questions for Sam while he's at the podium? Councilman Veer?
Yes, Sam? Uh, the, the valid is, it ended in a twenty-one? And it expired?
Nope. So the certificate itself is still valid. It's valid for a period of twelve years, the actual tax abatement. Um, that certificate is still valid at the moment, but like I said, because we are past project deadline, that was put in our resolution as a requirement. Um, at this point, it's prudent to try to update that, because if we don't, at any time, if the state is reviewing the paperwork, they could come back and say, okay, the project is still ongoing, but that date has passed and choose to revoke it themselves.
Is there some reason to believe that the state would do that, or?
Y- yeah, we, I spoke with our city assessor. I mean, there's, there's not a guarantee that they would revoke it, but they do tend to stay on top of this paperwork. And so, you know, every year by October thirty-first, we go through all these abatements and assessments and try to review those and make sure that everything's up to date, so it doesn't happen. Um, and because this is such a big component of the project, um, for the developer as well, you don't necessarily want to take the risk that that happens and kind of would have a very negative impact on like getting done, probably.
Thanks, Sam. Any more questions for Sam before we bring Brad up? Thank you, Sam. Brad?
Hello. Good to see you tonight.
It's good to be here tonight.
Nick, did you wanna join up there?
I'll just stand right behind you.
Yep, I'll pick Nick up. Uh, so, uh, just wanna say good evening, um, Mr. Manager, Councilman, thank you for uh, thanks for letting us be here tonight. Um, as mentioned, I'm here tonight to ask the city council's consideration to um, update the paperwork, amend the completion date in the um, Oprah that was granted uh, to the Kiefer House Hotel property. The Oprah was granted, uh, as Sam said, back in two thousand nineteen for a duration of twelve years. So we're asking for that covenant to be amended uh, for August first of two thousand twenty-four. Um, before I go further, though, I'd like to introduce Nick, somebody you've had the chance to meet him. Uh, he is our new VP of Construction and Development, um, and I'd just like to have him provide an update on the Kiefer.
Thanks, Brad. Good evening. So about two weeks ago, I made some promises that you're gonna start seeing some action, and I believe that you've seen some action out there. We're uh, we've got a lot done down in the basement, got the rest of the excavation done, got the stone in, we're getting uh, concrete's getting formed. As of an hour ago, they were still working. Um, concrete's gonna start flowing on Wednesday. We're gonna do the slurry on Friday, so we're making some pretty good progress out there. And you're gonna continue to see that. Thanks, Nick. Any questions?
Questions for Nick? Councilman Veer?
On that Nick, as far as, what was the, because the soil in the basement of the Kiefer was contaminated?
It was.
Okay. How, where was that contaminated from?
I, I don't, I don't, I would have to look at the.
Okay.
We had a testing agency come up, and it had, we had a special disposal.
Okay, and then you also had, uh, there was like a leaking issue or something?
Water.
Now, now was that from uh, ground, just ground water, or was that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we put in drain tiles around, uh, the entire footprint of the building, put salt pumps everywhere, just to remove the water from there. So it doesn't, so it doesn't happen again.
Right, so it's, it's fixed.
Permanent fixed.
Okay.
And, and to that, just so you can see what I'm holding here, um, so some of you had the chance to go in a couple weeks ago with Nick to see uh, where we were. Um, this, these are just a few of the photos of the locations of the basement, uh, to show you throughout that itch, uh, throughout that time period, the water that we had, the muck that was generated, um, and the difficulty that was going on through excavation, but you see here, um, I took these on Friday, so um, can I explain what they're doing?
I, it's, as I said, we finished all the, the excavation, all getting the soils out, finished the uh, underground plumbing and the back fill, and then this is the, the stone pea gravel getting ready for the slurry.
Councilman Wolfram? My understanding is that you help support the, the outside structure?
Correct.
Councilman?
Fargo?
Morrissey.
Ben. Um, on the, the last report that we got, quarterly report that Grant prepares, it said that the uh, the parking lot was going to be done. Uh, when, when will that be done?
That'll be done, it probably, we'll start on that in the spring.
Spring, so it's not gonna be done anytime this year.
Not this year, because we're gonna be using that back area for concrete trucks, for deliveries, for a lay-down area for construction.
Well, as you know, we're, we're, uh, we've had a lot of deadlines, promises, et cetera, and I hope that now that you're on the job, this thing will be done.
It will be.
Thank you.
Yeah, Nick, I, I mean, a few of us went in there a couple weeks ago, and we talked to Nick, and he promised me there'd be activity. Um, and there has been, a lot of activity, and I, I know better than anybody. I'm next door to this building every day, so I do appreciate that, Nick, and I will still take you uh, as a man of your word. Um, but I'm not voting for this. I, I'm not impressed with the flurry of activity when, when, you know, your contract's gonna be viola- whatever, the contract's gonna be violated again. Um, no, that doesn't mean I wish the project to fail, or um, that I think ill of you, or Brad. I like Brad a lot. I like Gianna, everybody from the company that I've met so far, I like. Um, but, you know, this is a excuse after excuse after excuse after excuse after excuse, and uh, I'm not going to lend my hand to that and have to face the residents of Hillsdale and have them ask me why we make exceptions for certain people. Um, but we bring the hammer down on people like Marv Salier and give them one year to improve their properties, so it's an ugly eyesore. I appreciate that you guys have cleaned the back up. Looks really nice. Been waiting for that to happen all summer, but like I said, I'm next to that building every day, and there's months and months that go by when I don't see any activity at all over there. Did you have something to add, Councilman Sharp?
Most definitely. I took a tour of the place. I don't wanna see us just give up on it, because if we have them walk away, that building will just collapse. I don't know how you're gonna get it done with the deadline you're giving us, because you got a floor in the back room, it has a six-inch drop in it. I mean, how are you gonna do it with three or four guys? I'm amazed if you're gonna be able to pull that off, but I'm not gonna vote against it either. When you mentioned Marv Salier, that personally touches me because of those two houses that were down the street from me, that were both drug houses. Not a, not a rumor, a fact. So let's not compare Marv Salier to the Kiefer House. That's not fair to him, and it's not fair to them. What happens? I will support you guys, but if the work stops, I'm gonna be out there too screaming, because that building's set lit up all these years, and nothing's been going on. You did clean up the backyard, the back area. It looks better. I understand it's a construction site, and it will be. But we can't just not walk away from it. It's set empty for many years. It's history of the Hillsdale. I would like to see it get done. And I listened to Mr. Stuccio over there when he said there's a hundred million dollars worth of projects going on around this, this colony, and I'd like to keep it that way. So I will support it. Thank you.
Councilman Veer?
I think it is considering, uh, that Kiefer is kind of a cornerstone of Hillsdale, but uh, what council has before us is a decision to make, and if we were not uh, grant the extension, uh, the August two thousand twenty-four deadline is pretty aggressive. I like that. But if you go back since two thousand nineteen, we've had COVID, and doing, and I've done a lot of remodel, and you just don't know what you're gonna get into. And the fact that there's been some very serious foundational issues with the Kiefer that have been addressed. Is it going as fast as we'd like? Of course not. But if this council were to totally support the Kiefer, we're gonna be looking at that Kiefer in its present state, I'm gonna say probably ten years, at which point it becomes a structural hazard, at which point the city will have to pay somebody to tear it down, and so we'll end up with a parking lot over there. And just looking at the building up by Saint Anthony's that the city had to take down, uh, and the cost involved in that, so uh, I think it'd be a real mistake not to support this. Uh, and I think they're showing good intent, and uh, because what we're gonna, what the city will end up with in August is much better than what we have right now. So from that standpoint, I would definitely support this.
Thank you, Tony. Any more? Councilman Wolfram?
I'd just like to agree with everything Tony said. Um, I think, again, they're, they found, you know, foundational problems, uh, and it's I, I'm a youngster here, I guess, because I didn't get here till January of eighty-nine, but it was a flop house when I got here. And it has the possibility of being a three, four-room boutique hotel, and will attract people for mayor. and will attract people for marriages and everything else. And so I'm, I'm very much in favor of extending it.
Thank you, Jerry.
I just, I just wanna add to this as well because we gotta play the long game and that's what we're doing here. I mean, the Kiefer, if you wanna call it a nice sort, yes, it's been a nice sort for seven years, but it's still a historical building. We have an historical downtown. And what CL Enterprises is gonna give us is a building that's gonna be standing for another hundred years in our historical downtown. And this is a beautiful thing to have. So you gotta play the long game. I mean, what do you want? Face litigation and fight for this thing? It's, that's, that's not very, anyway, it's your vote. But I think you gotta play the long game here. Like this whole council has done, our roads and everything else, we're playing the long game to put this city in a better position when we're all out of here. And the Kiefer is a big part of that.
I hear everything you guys are saying. I mean, what happens if the project stops? Do we know that the building's gonna sit vacant? Do we know that there's not another developer or somebody that was just in the building?
It's the only game we have right now is this one. We don't have another game to play.
I mean, you and I have been having this same conversation for seven years, Greg.
It's your vote.
Thank you, Greg. I appreciate you. I appreciate what you do on Tifa and I appreciate Tifa too. So, Councilman Soha.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to add to that. So I was on the Tifa board when we bought the building, when Brian had the foresight and fell in love with downtown and mentioned it to, at an event in Illinois, and they introduced him to CL Enterprises and how this whole thing just started, gosh, seven years ago. I mean, that's amazing. What I would like council to understand, which I just started to understand, is this Oprah, CL Enterprises is paying taxes on the building at its assessed value that it was assessed at in twenty nineteen. So the city's receiving income from this. This tax abatement started in twenty nineteen. So every time that we extend it, to Greg's point, you know, seeing the long game, every time we extend it, doesn't make it, the twelve years doesn't start over today. The twelve years started in twenty nineteen and will finish in twenty thirty-one, whether they finish it this year or they finish it in twenty twenty-seven, that tax abatement. And what it'll do for CL Enterprises is help them as they're getting their feet under them to promote the building and get it to be occupied because that's what we need. We need occupancy in this building and as many events as the college has, they're gonna need more than that to maintain the structure. They're gonna be bringing dozens of jobs and it's gonna be a magnificent preservation of the nineteenth century, right? And we're gonna have that. And our whole downtown is a historical registered historical different, uh, district. And to Tony's point, if we ever had to tear that down, I mean, that would be a terrible expense on the city. And so I wanna applaud CL Enterprises and say thank you. I know you've had many, many setbacks and abatements, and I know you've been hounded because the college has built, you know, a plethora of buildings and there's been a bunch of other projects. But no, the college has never had to dig down under a hundred and fifty year old building in hard clay and reveal a geyser that had to be abated, right? And so I just wanna say thank you for the work you've done. I am a visionary. I believe you're gonna do what you say that you're men of your word, Nathan as well. And I'm, I'm definitely in favor of this. Also wanna point out that the basement that they excavated and they put the plumbing in, I visited it two weeks ago, I just went down there two hours ago, and the pea gravel is there, they're, they're, they're getting, there's at least one form in for, they have what, twenty-two new pillars that they're doing to shore up the foundation? They have to get that shored up because if you do anything upstairs before the foundation's level and then it could all crack and get disheveled again. So I, I applaud it. The vision for what this building will become is, is magnificent. And it'll be a place that I think we'll all want to, to give our business to. So I'm in favor of this.
Councilman Sharp?
Uh, the building by St. Anthony's costs us two hundred and some odd thousand dollars, I believe. No, a little less?
Sixty, I think.
Sixty?
A hundred.
Hundred, well, okay. That building over there would cost probably about a million dollars when you get done tearing it all down. We don't wanna do that. We don't wanna stick to taxpayers with that. We wanna continue. So I think we need to make a vote.
Councilman Paladino.
From a legal or tax assessment perspective, why is this still in place? The original resolution says the city of Hillsdale required that rehabilitation of the facility shall be completed by December thirty of twenty twenty-one.
Because of the way it works. So the resolution is the mechanism by which the certificate is issued, the certificate is issued by the state. The state came to view it and say at some point, hey, and that's what they're trying to get off here, hey, you didn't comply with the requirements of the resolution from a local municipality, so we're going to revoke your certificate because you haven't complied. But the certificate stays in effect unless until it is revoked by the state. Typically, the way that happens is because somebody didn't comply, and so the local municipality asks the state to revoke the certificate, sends an application, says we'd like to revoke the certificate. I don't know how the rest of the state actually goes through reviews and receives their compliance. So that's why it's still in place. It's in place unless until the state for one reason or another, either their own impetus or more likely because they're asked by the municipality, revokes the certificate. So that's why if you amend the resolution and they were then to review it on their own, the state level, they would say, okay, you're still not complying, so we leave the certificate in place, basically.
So we do not enforce the requirements of the resolution once it's passed? That's in the hands of the state?
The, the whole certificate, whether or not it gets issued is basically in the hands of the state. You pass a resolution as part of that process to approve it and recommend that a certificate be issued, correct? So the yes and no to your question because as I said, typically the way they get revoked is because the municipality asks them to revoke it because the outfit to whom the certificate was given didn't do what they said they were gonna do, right? So then the municipality asks that it be revoked. And then the state tax commission looks at that and makes an exception.
So we're recommending more than granting this Oprah? Recommending that the state?
Basically, yeah. I mean, it's, it's, it's slightly more nuanced than that, but in, in a nutshell, yeah.
Correct me, didn't they, not, maybe not this council or the one just before this, but didn't council previously extend this till this year?
No, I think that's stuff that's been going on with the Tifa of that, you know? We had a guarantee that it was gonna be done this November of twenty twenty-three. I, I think you would look to Tifa for that, for extensions on, on the contract and stuff like that. This is the only thing we're handling at council. This is Tifa's project. The only thing we're handling here is the Oprah. And as Councilman Paladino suggested and as the city attorney said, if, you know, this isn't a vote to revoke their certificate or go to the state to ask them to revoke the certificate, it's a, a vote to extend their certificate or leave it in place somewhere it's at. Councilman Paladino.
For further clarification, we're not even voting to amend a contract. We are voting to change the language in a non-binding resolution that we sent to the state as guidance over issuing the Oprah. Very interesting. Okay.
Councilman Veer?
Well, another thing to consider too, because this isn't all grant money, it's private investor money. And if the private investors get scared and say, hey, the city's pulling their support, that dries up and so does the project. So I really think as this council, we need to support this. Extend the date of completion to August first, twenty twenty-four, and that's my motion.
One question, Tony. What happens if you guys aren't done August first, twenty twenty-four? You guys are at the podium right now in public. Tell me, do we do this all over again? What's the?
That's not an option. It's, it's not an option. I have to dumb it up.
Failure's not an option.
And, and as I promised you two weeks ago, you're gonna see action, you're gonna continue to see action, and it's my task and responsibility to make this thing happen. So there isn't that what if plan B. Plan A is the plan.
I just appreciate you getting the back cleaned up, the weeds trimmed. That means a lot to me, it really does.
I made a promise.
Yes, you did. And you kept it.
Did you have something?
Yeah, I, I certainly commend the mayor for firing a shot across the bow here. You know, we've been waiting a long time for this. We have had a number of deadlines that never quite got fulfilled. I'll vote for it. I don't really want, you know, but I, I commend the mayor for not voting for it too, just to send a message.
And if we're up here at August first next year, guys, and it's done, you guys can all look at me and say, I told you so.
Yeah, I will.
But if we're not, I'm gonna look to you guys to maybe pound your fist a little bit, a little tiny bit.
I agree with that.
Councilman Veer, you made a motion, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I voted to extend the deadline. But, but also as part of that, just being devil's advocate.
Being devil's advocate. If it's not complete on August first, twenty twenty-four, there's gonna be a lot more work done on that place. We're gonna have, the Kiefer's gonna at least have a foundation to which maybe you can entertain some other options. But it's, yeah, it, I, I think we really need to go forward with it.
Councilman Paladino?
I would like to hear from Andrew whether there's actually any legal recourse to this thing. It, it seems like extending this deadline is sort of silly. They got twelve years for the Oprah. That's in the state's hands. Unless we wanna, you know, request that the state revoke it, probably nothing is gonna change. So all the real power is in the hands of Tifa. And if Tifa doesn't have any actual recourse to call in this promissory note, then bringing this up to council and making a debate out of it every year doesn't, doesn't seem to make much sense.
Two years after the fact? I, I've thought of that as well. My guess is there's more that we're not hearing here tonight.
Well, and, and.
Because there is not, just no reason for us to be doing this except for that the state can revoke the certificate. They could have revoked it two years ago, it looks like. So. Or maybe we're just being salient. Councilman Soha.
Well, to add, add to that, I mean, if we do pass this, which I hope we do, it shows that the city is still supporting and behind the development, still supporting and behind Tifa's engagement in this process and that, that council has said, yes, this is something that we believe in and that we wanna see come to fruition. So even if it has no teeth, like you suggested, at least it's a, a public portrayal that council behind the project and believes it will get completed.
Well, it has some teeth in that, that it, but if we pass this, then it means that the state won't recall it back. So there's some probability, even if it's, you know, ten percent probability, it still puts a damper on activity downtown. And I think that, you know, Tony's exactly correct, that we need to go ahead and, and say, hey, and as he pointed out, it's a national historic district downtown. You've got a building that was sitting there vacant for years falling down. They find out that, hey, the thing probably would have fallen, fallen apart if they hadn't gotten in there and found, and got the foundation fixed up. So I think it's very important that we go ahead and, and extend this.
All right, we got a motion on the floor from?
Just.
Did you have something, Greg?
I'm just gonna add that if, if CL Enterprise would have known what they were getting into, chances are they wouldn't have purchased it. So we really have a blessing here for them coming to find it and hanging with it and finishing this project, or we would have had a parking lot. So I commend them for, for staying, staying strong and being with it.
As Tony said.
You know, the motivation is, you know what you're gonna walk into.
Just so I can clarify too with respect to what Councilman Paladino was, was asking about. So the type of action that you're taking now, in effect, it is established, would be establishing that they are not in effect outside the scope of the time that they were originally given to get it done. Because that is a basis upon which the council could vote to revoke the certificate. And if you voted to revoke the certificate because they weren't in compliance, that's a ground upon which you can revoke it, right? You'd have to show that basically they haven't done it either within the timeframe that's been authorized, or they've not proceeded in good faith with the operation of the facility in American system with the Oprah Act. So, or unless there were, you know, there were certain things in law I can leverage. But in effect, that is the affirmative vote that you would be in a position to take if you didn't extend this, right? So in effect, the extension is saying we are giving you more time for your position or your functionally in default, and we could then say, we're gonna ask that this be revoked, right? And, and there is, you could still, even if, even if they had time to run, you could still revoke it if you didn't think they were continuing in good faith, right? So if it's set between now and, and, you know, approaching that deadline and nothing happened, that might be grounds upon which you could ask that it be revoked, even if you passed the resolution to see.
Does anybody else have anything to add? We've got a motion on the floor, a second by Councilman Soha. Motion to extend the Oprah certificate. Hold on, fellas and ladies. Motion to adopt the following resolution, amending the completion date of Resolution three, three, seventy-two to August first, twenty twenty-four, on the floor from Councilman Veer, seconded by Councilman Soha. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pratt?
No.
Sharp?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Veer?
Yes.
Woolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Sackford?
No.
Councilperson Morrison?
Yes.
And Paladino?
Yes.
Seven yes, two no. That's approved.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
All right, we will move on. We are done with old business. We'll move into new business. Item A, airport M dot terminal construction contract. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor.
I see Ginger here too. Ginger, you wanna take the podium?
Thanks, we'll come up. So like you've seen many times before, anything we do at the airport is done in conjunction with M dot Arrow, so the Michigan Department of Transportation Aviation Department. That being said, we're to the point of actually starting, preparing to start construction on the new terminal. So this is the contract of which to initiate that. M dot will receive the federal funds from the FAA and then they bill the city as our share comes due. But as the agenda summary out, lays out, there's the total cost of the project as we've talked about before. And as mentioned, after the breakdown, the airport improvement fund has about, about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars more than our potential share for that. We are negotiating to try to save some money still, so we're hoping that, that, that number of ours will go down. And again, the airport has been planning for this, to complete this project for many years, even before myself coming to the city. Ginger, you wanna talk about?
Oh, yeah. Good evening, everyone. You were talking about exciting stuff earlier. So this is exciting stuff. We're gonna be building a landmark building out there. And I believe that the funds have been transferred to M dot already, and then M dot sent us the sponsor contracts to sign so we can get going.
This is awesome, Ginger. It has great work out there.
Right.
Councilman Veer?
Ginger, when did the city extend the runways out there?
It was about thirteen years ago.
Thirteen years ago? And it says many years you've been saving this. Is that probably when they started a fund to do the terminal? Maybe thirteen years ago or was it more recently?
More recently, no, thirteen, probably more like, I don't know, seven, five, seven years.
Five or seven, okay.
Any other questions for Ginger?
I just wanna thank you for that big jet flying over my house the last couple of times.
You're welcome. There's been a lot of them out here.
Oh, they're sitting up my yard. Now I hear this rumble, the dogs and I are both looking up like, what the? It's different, and that's for sure, but it's good to see the progress being done out there. It's not just for the colleges, the community airport, folks. It's not just for the colleges, the community airport folks. Yes, the college will use it, so will buyers and everybody else. We need to update, keep moving forward. And that's a good step, what you did. And I commend you for the work you put into this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's an airport. We have one. Should be in the twenty first century, so. Councilman Soha.
Am I correct, um, Ginger, that the, the money that is locally contributed has been the airport has earned that through gas sales?
Correct.
And that's been set aside specifically for this project? So it's not coming out of general funds or other budgetary areas? It's, the airports earned this and it's set aside for this project?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ginger? Thank you, Ginger. Uh, motion? Motion on the floor from Councilman Mor- uh, Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Morrissey to approve a resolution, uh, for the M dot contract, twenty twenty three oh seven four one. Authorize the city manager and city clerk on behalf of the city Hillsdale to enter into the airport terminal construction contract. Can I have a roll call vote, City Clerk?
Councilperson Sharp?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Veer?
Yes.
Woolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Sackford?
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Palladino?
Yes.
And Pratt?
Yes.
That's all approved. That's Resolution three, five, seven, six.
Thank you, Katie. All right, we will move into new business, item B, Hillsdale Mobile Home Park Monthly Lot Payments. Dave?
Yes, thank you. I will start this off. So we do have a representative from the Mobile Home Park here, John Salzman. Um, but I tried to give the Cliff Notes version of the summary, uh, in the summary here. So they purchased the, the Mobile Home Park in, um, June, July of twenty one, or May of twenty one is when they actually made the purchase. And, um, one of the, the things that they didn't realize at the time, uh, or, uh, or was missed inadvertently was that the state statute on mobile home parks in Michigan provides for a three dollar, uh, per lot, per month fee to be paid to the, the community that the, the Mobile Home Park is in. Well, from May twenty twenty one until the first of the year, when we were able to connect on this, um, the, those payments, penalties and interest accumulated pretty substantially to over, you know, almost two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. When we were able to connect, they caught that up, um, which was a little over sixty five hundred dollars at the time. Um, but they wanted to discuss the bigger portion, which was around two hundred and twenty one thousand dollars, um, as of May of this, this spring. That being said, in the, in the spring of the year, the Finance Committee talked about this issue, um, you know, with the treasurer, myself and others who were both. And we're, we're trying, and the city attorney at the time, we talked about, you know, what were our options to kind of negotiate on this amount? And that really, cause it's a, a big amount and we, our goal was not necessarily to fine or, you know, penalize someone substantially like this, uh, but more wanted the investment to go into the park itself. So we had proposed at that time, like a ten percent, so around twenty two thousand dollars thereabouts, um, penalty and interest and, and whatnot for this. Uh, we proposed that, um, Mr. Salzman came back to us and, and we've been discussing it, um, and wanted to make his case to reduce that, as his intent and the company's intent to, is to invest, uh, you know, in the park to make it better. That being said, um, John is here to talk about that. So I'll let him go with that and then we can, you know, answer questions, uh, from the council and hopefully make a decision in that direction to go.
Thank you, Dave. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, Dave, thanks for, uh, your time today and, uh, prior as well as our conversations. Mr. Mayor, Council, appreciate it. It's, uh, letting me in here. Uh, to have a conversation, uh, just, you know, re-reading what David said, um, it, it, it was a misandarin, uh, we wanted to rectify right away. So I feel we kind of jumped in, jumped on that, was able to get the back taxes. It was all, got that paid out, uh, plus the small interest and stuff that was tapped onto that that was also big. Um, you know, moving, moving from that, our goal, just like David said, is to continue to improve the, the community. Uh, we, we did purchase it just over two years ago. Uh, we are continually put, you know, give or put back into the, into the community, not only for additional housing, uh, but also some improvements with the utility infrastructure. Um, we just did some small repairs recently. Uh, we have some additional, um, you know, things coming down the pike here the next couple of years. We'd like to continue to improve things. Uh, some of the age of the homes are older, uh, they will have to be replaced eventually. Um, and is, uh, you know, in for Hillsdale, it was a form of, a form of housing to be able to offer additional to residents, um, you know, for the community and also for the city Hillsdale. So with that, and I, I'm asking that we can, uh, see further relief, uh, from the penalties. I believe it's a ci- civil penalty that we're talking about, uh, so we can continue forward and continue to, you know, uh, work, do the work that we've gotta plan to perform it out, uh, for the next, you know, two, three, four, five years as we bring this, you know, project to complete, uh, in some capacity.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John? Councilman Palladino.
Mobile home parks don't pay property taxes?
Yes, we do.
You do pay property taxes. What is the point of this fee? This might be a question for a city staff, just, or this is, is there any?
It's a state statute, statewide.
So they get assessed at the regular rate of the city individually?
So what this is related to is there's a separate statute that the state has that governs mobile home parks. All that we're, you're talking about with respect to this issue is that statute, which has nothing to do with the property tax.
Right, I'm just wondering, is this, but it's not in lieu of property taxes?
No, well, yeah, that's what it's like. Yeah, that's basically what it is.
Oh, so they don't pay property taxes?
They pay property tax probably on the mobile park as a whole, on the land. But you've got each individual little lot in there that are gonna, are homes, but not actually homes. Um, they rent the lots. It's, the, mobile trailer parks are unique. So think of it this way, if I were to do residential subdivision, right, I would subdivide a large piece of property into separate lots, which would be owned by separate individuals who would have separate houses on each one. That does not happen in the mobile home park. Mobile home park is one big chunk of property. It's one parcel. It hasn't been subdivided into a separate parcel. And the owner of the mobile home park creates the lots within it upon which people rent those lots to put their trailers. And so this is a way to kind of, um, make sure that the way that those are taxed is appropriate because if you just taxed this big giant parcel and assessed the property taxes on it, there's no way for a, the mobile home park, for example, if you did personal property tax and that sort of thing, to account for the fact that they got all these other people with all these little, um, trailers on these places. So it's a way to have this fee that in effect, the park can collect from the people that have lots on it, right? To be able to accurately reflect what the taxes should be. That's, that's why it's done.
So the park as a whole is on the land with its roads and its infrastructure, but not on the actual homes in the park? Because they're not established residences?
Well, they do under this statute. That's what the statute tries to do.
So not our standard military?
Right, it's pursuant to statute.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, I'm having trouble understanding where this number comes from. Three dollars per, um-
Per the statute.
No, I, I understand that. Three dollars at an average of about seventy homes over, over about two years, eighty nine homes at the max, I think. We're talking a few hundred dollars a month and then we end up at two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I mean, what?
The statute. So the statute says if you don't pay, there is a monthly late payment fee that's provided for in the statute. There is a monthly late payment interest charge. And there is a civil fine. And the civil fine is ten dollars for occupied trailer coach per month. And that's really where it stacks up is that civil fine, right? And that's why you have some, so one thing you can't do is negotiate our tax debt. You can't say, okay, well, if you pay us two thousand or five thousand dollars taxes you owe us, you're good, okay? Municipals can't do that. Everybody's gotta pay their tax. Can't negotiate it down. But what you can do in this particular instance, and this was the question that was asked of me, can we negotiate the other part of it, in particular of a civil fine? And the civil fine is a civil fine. It's just that. And because it's not a criminal matter, I think there's legal discretion that the city would have to negotiate it down, cause it's not a tax. It's a fine and in effect, the city could or couldn't choose to, to assess at least to the amount it is. So that's where the leeway is to negotiate with the trailer park, to, uh, the owners to determine what sounds fair and appropriate to resolve it because two hundred plus thousand dollars perhaps doesn't sound like it's it's justified, but it is a pretty good state to get you to pay, I have to say. If you're aware of the statute, you just purposely aren't paying, right?
Thank you. I didn't see that in the pack. I appreciate that.
Councilman Stuccio.
Two questions for David. Uh, is, is the attempt to take the percentage to twenty some thousand and put that back in the infrastructure? Can we watch that? And the second question is, are we setting any kind of precedence if we do this? I mean, are we gonna put ourselves in a box someplace on Stone Road?
Well, I think as Tom had indicated, we can, we have some flexibility here in, in negotiating this. I think where there might be some confusion is, um, in the last sheet of this, and I think that Councilman Palladino might have been confused, where we came up with a twenty two thousand one eighty nine, the city treasurer, um, after they caught up on their, the current payments, he kinda, uh, put a cap on, you know, what the past was. So the past was the, the two hundred and, uh, two hundred and twenty five some-
Twenty one thousand, yes.
So he put a cap on that. So that last sheet there that says twenty two thousand one eighty nine, I wrote next to a ten percent of the total. So that spreadsheet is what we use to calculate that, but it's based on ten percent, um, that we propose to them to try to, to, to try to settle.
That's my question. Is that ten percent? Does that ten, does that ten percent go into his infrastructure and we ensure that does so we do and include your block? Or is that, he just gives that to the city? My question.
Oh, uh, the ten percent would be, uh, a payment to the city, so that twenty two thousand would be a payment to us. But, and we would, they, what we proposed was foregoing the, you know, the two hundred thousand thereabouts. But, you know, uh, I guess it would be on them whether or not they would invest that into the, the community. But he has shown us, uh, provided the Finance Committee, um, um, with some documentation of their plans to invest and to improve it over the next several years. Again, it's one of those things that, you know, we gotta rely on.
But, but it doesn't, he doesn't get to pay, that money comes with us. And he, he can't, we can't let him have that fine and ensure that he puts it into his infrastructure. That's additional money he has to put up with.
Tom? No, so the fine is over two hundred thousand dollars.
Right, I'm, but we're not-
So if you're negotiating it down, the, the, whatever you end up receiving for that fine would presumably just go into their own fund of the city. It's money that the city can do with what it wants. It doesn't require-
That's, that's, yeah.
The, the, the question would be the amount that they don't have to pay when they put that in.
So my next question, are we setting any kind of precedence later down the road for something like this?
Only if it was, I mean, this is a real peculiar thing, so I suppose if you had other trailer parks and they were in the same situation where they were racking up fines because they didn't pay it.
But this only is gonna flex for a trailer park situation.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Like I said, you cannot negotiate down tax. So they've paid the tax part of it. Um, this is only because of the corp that you have this civil fine and I think you have legal, uh, some legal flexibility.
My question's for John. I have seen you have some policy process though. If you have a tenant who falls behind, are there a lot rent? What is your recourse?
Uh, we'll try to get them to, first of all, make their payment or work out of some sort of payment arrangement if they fall too far behind. But if they're unwilling to work with us, um, our hands are tied when you move forward with like some sort of removal, some capacity eviction. Um, or, you know, having them sign their home back over to us so we can take it over and then, uh, renovate it to occupy it.
But there's, are there late fees and fines added to that before?
There are, there are late fees, yes.
Okay, all right.
Councilman Sharp?
My turn. I went there last Friday. I walked around. I talked to the tenants. A lot of them were fearful they're gonna have repercussions, so they didn't want to have their names mentioned or anything. Um, I'm disgusted in that trailer park. It is unbelievable what I saw there. They paid four hundred and twenty five dollars a month rent. There's eighty nine units there. That comes out to thirty seven thousand dollars a month. Four hundred, four hundred and, what was it? I had it wrote down. Four hundred and fifty three thousand dollars, nine hundred. A year they would collect in rent. That's just rent. Plus they have five trailers. They rent out, um, their own. This is lot rent, four hundred and twenty five dollars. Evan Green Estates in Jonesville pays four hundred dollars a month. Go there and compare that to that. I realize they said, well, we walked in this, we didn't know what we're walking into, but they also own other trailer parks. So they know what they got themselves into. They, nobody in there said anything good about the ownership in there, the current ownership and the former ownership. It's just like, pay your money, keep your mouth shut. Don't worry about it. I worry about it. I had a term for it, but I won't say it because I already said it in the finance meeting, what I, I thought it was. But I'm very disgusted in what I'm looking at. And I think they should pay their ten percent or whatever it is, they should pay it. And not try and get over it. If they wanna improve and fix that place, great. I'm all for it. I'll support you on that. But I'm just disgusted what I saw on there. I cannot believe people would live in a place like that. But in nowadays times, it's either that or they're homeless. Do we wanna create more homeless people for Hillsdale? No. But we also wanna give them an opportunity to have a place to live that they can put pride into. Yes, he did put patching in, patched some of the roads, a little bit, patches here and there. But other than that, you all should go in there and take a look, walk around, just take a look. And ask yourself, would you want your family to live here? Would you want your mother-in-law to live there? That's what Heard ran it. Yeah, that's when the Heard family ran it. And it was clean. Yep, and he made sure it was taken care of. If you didn't do it, you had a visit from throw home, real quick. That's my concern. And I, I'm just devastated what I saw on there. And that's about all I gotta say right now. The money's there. Thank you.
Councilman Morrissey.
Yeah, I, I, uh, I sympathize with what, uh, Councilman Sharp was saying. My view is that ignorance of the law is no excuse, that we've given a ninety percent discount on this already and that they should pay something.
Councilman Soha.
You mentioned you have other parks. You have multiple parks.
Correct, yeah. The ownership group has multiple parks, correct.
Are any of those other parks in Michigan?
Uh, we do have some. We purchased them at the same time. So, so, so we have other, we have four of the parks in Michigan.
And you entered the state all about the same time in twenty twenty?
Yep.
Okay, so I can see the oversight. Unfortunately, you know, um, lack of knowledge isn't an excuse to not pay. I mean, if I don't pay my property taxes, the city's gonna assess me penalties and interest and I can't go and say, I'm sorry. Just pay the property tax. I'm gonna have to pay the penalties and interest. Even if I, even if I tell them, look, I'm, I'm investing thirty thousand dollars in a new carport for my property, you know, I'm improving the property. Sorry, you know, you have to, and then they say, oh, you're improving your property. Well, we'll reassess it, you know, which that's actually happened to me, so. Two years in a row, so, um, I'm just saying, I, 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 I think the city's being extremely generous. Uh, we didn't write the rules. Um, I'm, yeah, I, I can't see forgiving ninety percent personally, but I'll, I'll vote for that because that's what Mr. Matt said. He appreciated, so.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm also, uh, also- Yeah, I, 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 I'm also, uh, also, I know, I, I understand you're in a delicate situation and I, you know, but I, I don't, I don't think I can be comfortable saying we should bring the hammer down on the last group that was in front of us and then say, give you a pass. I think we need to treat everybody equally. So I'm inclined to agree with the city manager that whether it's a hotel or a trailer park, uh, we need to enforce what we have on the books, so. Councilman Sharp?
Just one other thing. Don't forget we did what this thing's called special assessment. A lot of people weren't happy with it, but they got the roads fixed, but they're still paying the taxes. So they didn't have a say either, but they're gonna have a nice road when it's done. Thank you.
Councilman.
Now, John, you're current on your property tax, correct?
Correct.
All right. You have eighty-nine lots, correct?
We have ninety-eight total lots.
Oh, ninety-eight. Okay. Um, and each lot is supposed to pay three dollars per month, per year, so each lot would be thirty-six for the year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm not sure, if we just figure it a hundred and we have three, so that's, is that a year?
Yep.
Okay, thirty-two oh four. And this is for two years? Little bit over? Because it was, you guys purchased it in May of twenty-twenty-one and it's now.
It was about two years in May of twenty-three that I think.
Yeah, we, we did this, okay. So, so two years and the, the fees in question are thirty-two oh four, so times two, you're looking at sixty-four hundred. So I'm just figuring off the numbers here. Uh, so the two-hundred-and-twenty-one they owe, as Tom Legal said, that they have a, the civil infraction is a good portion of that.
With civil fine.
The, the, the civil fine portion of it. Because, so you're looking at a, had they done it in a timely fashion, you're looking at sixty-four hundred roughly. Okay, that, they should have paid, that they didn't, but because of, we're looking at two-hundred-and-twenty-one-eighty-ninety and the, the city finance has decided that twenty-two-one-eighty-nine would suffice, which would still have two times the amount, which would be directed toward, uh, uh, the fines and civil, however the, you want to put it down as far as the late fees and the interest and stuff like that.
So the late, the late fees and the interest and the tax have been paid. You can't negotiate the late fees and the interest.
Okay.
I think that all we're talking about here is the civil fine, right? Correct, David?
Well, it's how it's calculated out. They, they still have a penalty and interest in the civil fine that.
Yeah.
It's part of the three dollars, not, we're not talking about property taxes. It's strictly the three dollar per lot, per, per, or per trailer, per, per month fee.
So in effect, though, the, the amount that it's been negotiated down to recover the interest and the late fees, if, the, the real area that you're compromising is the civil fine.
So.
So the twenty-two-one-eighty-nine deals with the. It would cover all of them. So it would cover the, the late fees and the interest based upon what Mr. Mack is saying and a portion of the civil fine, a significantly reduced portion of the civil fine.
And, and then also, is this, is this tax on trailers, uh, the three dollars, is that unique to Michigan or is that kind of standard, uh, for other states?
I have no idea. I didn't know this existed until this issue came up, right? So if you're not somebody that does trailer park stuff, and I've even represented places that trailer parks never came up because most people who live in the trailer parks know that you have to pay it, okay? So that, this is kind of an odd circumstance that this occurred.
And then one final question, this will be for, for John. Uh, so the twenty-two-one-eighty-nine is an additional amount to bring the records to satisfaction for the city? Is that what we're saying?
You said John.
Well, I know, no, I, I, I know, but I'm just getting some clarification before I, and as far as the, the twenty-two.
So the twenty, yeah, that would, that would cover everything. The, the idea was that it would cover the, the two years of lot fees, the, the six thousand and some of the penalties, some of the interest and some of the civil fine. Uh, I think it was just, uh, at coming up with a number.
Okay, now, i- is that the minimum that we could go? I mean, I'm, I'm just asking, I mean, as, as far as to be legal.
The answer.
Do we have any flexibility? Does, does the city have any flexibility? Because my next question for John would be, what would he be willing to pay? I mean, how far off are we?
I don't know that there's a minimum. You have to pay the, you have to pay the fees. I, when I was asked about this, I was assuming that where, and, and I think my indication was that where you have room to negotiate down is the fine, okay? So you have room, I would say, to negotiate the fine because it is a civil penalty, much like if you got a ticket and we're gonna pay the fine, we do that frequently down at district court, for example, with code enforcement things, right? We can negotiate the fine because we're trying to get you to govern compliance. So if you bring your property into compliance, we tell you, you won't have to pay the fine that's required for a determination of responsibility, okay? So that's similar to this because it's a civil case and it's not criminal and because the fine itself is not a tax, you cannot optimize. It is something where I think legally, and this is my legal opinion, the city has the ability to negotiate. Somebody could challenge that, say, hey, we shouldn't have done that. And the court could say, Mr. Thompson doesn't know what he's talking about. I think that you can't negotiate that down. But my assessment is you probably can, given that this is civil fine, given the way the statute is, correct? So that's in effect what, what you're doing here. The total amount includes the tax, the penalties, the interest and the civil fine. Twenty-two-thousand-one-eighty-nine will take care of pretty much all of that except all of the civil fine. You have just a minuscule amount of the civil fine comparatively speaking that would be, end up being paid at that rate.
And if I could add, so if you look at that spreadsheet that we had there, how it's calculated, so if you look at, you have, it's ten dollars per occupied trailer per month. So, so they had to say seventy-four lots in June of twenty-one, so that's seven-hundred-and-forty dollars penalty or civil fine for June. And so, yeah, you multiply it times twenty-four, you get seventeen thousand dollars in, in civil fines just for that, just for that particular, uh, you know, group of, or, or line. So then you go down, you keep going down for each month, and so it starts each, and that's how you got up to over two-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars because, you know, you're talking twenty-four months, twenty-three months, and times seven-hundred-and-forty dollars a month.
Josh has had his hand up for like twenty minutes.
What is the total amount of the, the original fee, the late fee and the interest? I don't think we've got that number.
It's in here. I don't know.
I couldn't find it.
I may have.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-one, two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety.
When did you take that percent?
By the time the city treasurer and NHP staff were able to connect the past due amount, including penalties and interest, was calculated at two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety dollars in May.
No, no, I don't, without the civil fine, I want to know what is the bare minimum we can charge them? Because I'm worried we're just saying, okay, pay ten percent, but, I mean, what, I don't know. It doesn't seem like a particularly objective standard. I'd like to know exactly what they owe legally and then, you know, we can discuss what actual fine we're assessing rather than just saying ten percent.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety dollars they owe the city.
That includes the civil fine though, which is negotiable. I want to know what is the mandatory payment?
So, unless we negotiate it, two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand.
I understand, but what is the non-negotiable part of the payment?
The whole thing?
From the ci, not from John's perspective, from the city council's perspective, what do we, what, what portion of this payment do we have control over? No, we don't have control over all of it from, from the legal perspective. We can't remit the original fee.
We would have, we have the ability to say, no, you pay the full amount, which is the two-hundred-and.
Twenty-one thousand.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, um, because of the civil fines, civil fines, penalties and interest. Um, but then, uh, if you're asking what the, the three dollars per month per, per trailer is, we'd have to put that into.
So here we go.
Oh, so we don't even know.
So I have a, I have a spreadsheet that was sent to me early on in this process, um, that, that lists out through April first of twenty-twenty-three. So for example, um, for the date of June first, for the rent, the lot rent that was due June first of twenty-twenty-one. Um, the way that they calculated it at that time at the city level, because I think they were just using, and this is based on the number of occupied trailer coaches, right? Not on a, so they, they were estimating because they didn't know the number, a hundred and two, so just to use that number at the time. The fee you remit for three dollars a month would be three-hundred-and-six bucks, number of months past due, twenty-eight, because you're figuring it out for each one because it runs. Three percent late penalty, nine dollars and eighteen cents, uh, late payment interest, eighty-five, sixty-eight. Civil fine for that month was twenty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty dollars for that month's failure payment. So that's where that big number was. And based upon their total calculation, um, on this spreadsheet, the amount that was attributable as of April first, twenty-three stacked up to three-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty dollars, based on that hundred-and-two number, which we know was inaccurate and was quite a bit higher. So that, almost all of this is civil fine, the bulk of it is civil.
Right. Can you read crazy over saying what I'm doing there?
Uh, per, or discussion, you're just, but I, I think what Josh and I are, are just getting at is because we can't forgive the three dollars per, the, we can't forgive the late fees.
I, I would say you can't, I would say you're in, you're in pretty murky ground trying to.
Right, so, so, so those, uh, the normal, uh, lot fee.
I, I get what your question was. I can't give you a specific number because I would have to calculate it based upon the number of trailer coaches, right? So we would have to have the accurate number for each of those months of the trailer coaches because that was just one month if you estimated that they had a hundred and two of them, which the city did at that time. So I don't have the updated spreadsheet where they went through and figured out the actual numbers.
But, but actually, on the, on the. David actually presented us and the number of occupied in twenty-twenty-one, June, was seventy-four, seventy-four, seventy-three, seventy-three, goes up to in two.
Well, let's see, what was it at June first of twenty-one?
Uh, seventy-four.
Seventy-four?
Yeah. Okay.
John, do you have this number I'm looking for?
I do, yeah.
Oh, let's hear it.
Yeah, because just that number reduced from one-oh-two down to that number, if I plugged it into this spreadsheet for that particular month, would have reduced the civil fine down to twenty-thousand-seven-twenty from twenty-eight thousand, right? And it does the same thing all across for all those numbers.
Because on, on this also, it's a low of seventy-four, and actually, there was a couple months of seventy-two.
Yeah.
And it had a high of eighty-eight.
Yeah. So I don't know, but I, I didn't get whatever the updated one was. I was just giving you the example so you could see that almost all of this is.
Okay.
The civil fine.
So the amount, the amount that we paid in, or that I paid in, uh, May of this year when we settled everything out, uh, was the six-thousand-three-twenty-four-seventy-five. And that amount covered all the back taxes, so three dollars for, for, uh, per home, per lot, plus the additional, uh, late, late payment penalties and the percent, uh, the monthly penalty that was also included on that. So that, that was that total. The remaining amount then was around two-hundred-and-five-thousand for the civil.
Yeah. So you have already paid everything that we can non-negotiate as well as your property taxes.
Correct.
So we are assessing this entire twenty-two thousand as a civil line? Okay. We've been discussing as if it's.
Which is what I thought was the case because that's why, where I indicated that you have the room to negotiate. They should have, they should have been paying the, all of the other stuff that they've paid, right?
Okay.
That, that shouldn't be something that we should be talking about negotiating down. This is just the amount of the civil fine. And because it's a civil fine, it's like a civil case, you can negotiate civil case if, you know, uh, you can settle civil cases for less than what you might be.
Which we're proposing.
Which, which is what you're proposing to. So it's not a situation where I would tell you, you can't do it. You could do it here, I think, and it's in your discretion.
So we are not lumping in the mandatory payment, but the negotiable? That is, that is the impression I was under.
Councilman Stucho.
I just, I just would like to rewrite what Mr. Sharp has said. We're dealing with a business here, has five trailer parks on the state. This one here, it looks like gross is about a half a million dollars a year. I mean, and, and again, if they have tenants that are late on their payments, they are fined, they are given a late fee, just as like we are doing here, so I'm sorry.
I agree.
Anybody else got anything?
So what's the motion here to be honest? Did, did John have anything to add?
John, do you want to say anything else?
Yes, no, I'd love to.
Okay.
Get a minute.
Yeah.
So I, and I get the, so I get the, the Councilman Sharp has been out there and seen what, you know, saying that it's not a, and I told him in the, in the financial meeting as well, that I was, to kind of take it back from him, because this is something we do every day, this is our, you know, this is our livelihood. So when we see members from outside of the community come in and not appreciate what's being done or, or what has been done, it obviously, it obviously affects us and impacts us. So from my standpoint, um, you know, we, you know, when I was, we, David actually started meeting with, uh, Peter, um, to kind of solve this and get through this, like, we owned up to it, right? We took care of it. Again, it was our mistake and I'm, I'm still owing up to it. But my proposal was not to have to pay an additional fine for this, but to have to be able to continue to put this back into the community. Your concern is for the residents. By paying the fine that's going to the city, we're not really doing anything for the residents. My proposal would be to put this back into the community and improve the community for the residents, uh, which we are continuing to do and we still have plans to do this. Uh, this will, this will be a definite bump in roll if we, if we lose the funds and have to, you know, put them elsewhere. But to put these back in the community and to continue to make improvements, I mean, we've, we have only had this for two years, you know, and we're dealing with issues that may have been going on for ten, fifteen, however many years. I mean, most of these, most of these communities are fifty, sixty-plus years old, uh, which you don't see that goes into it. Our infrastructure, uh, water line repairs, sewer line repairs are great, that are in the ground and nobody sees. Uh, we do patch roads, we try to do what we can, but at the end of the day, those, those water lines and stuff that are breaking, plus the money that was put in to increase the, you know, volume of homes that are available, it, it all kind of gets lumped in together. Um, so I'm just proposing that, not that we eliminated more or less, but that we are able to put it back into the community and continue to prove that for the residents who are there, that obviously that you have concern for, um, to make, you know, improve their lives. That would be what I would propose.
How, how long do you propose that we, or, or, would be to give you an opportunity to do this, to put your, put your, uh, money where your mouth is?
So the fine, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If you were to reach an agreement on the compromise, um, to compromise the civil fine, you could put that in writing as a written agreement. And if there are things that you want the, the park to show in terms of how they're investing those funds, the city certainly could be able to put those in a written agreement for the, the, uh, park to, you know, indicate what they plan to do and have that be something that's part of the, the deal, right? Part of the consideration for why the city is agreeing to, uh, reduce the amount of the civil fine.
Thank you, Councilor. Appreciate that. Thank you, Councilor, appreciate that, I would much rather see the money go back into the trailer park for the residents over there than go into our coffers. Councilman Sharp.
You've owned the place for two years, how many times you raised the rent? Twice?
Three times.
Three times? Amazing. And you're crying poverty, but you're saying, well, we'll put it back in the trailer park. Like I said, nobody in there had anything good to say. They didn't see any results other than a few patch jobs. Your, and, your group is invisible. They have, you have a manager running the place, they made sure, they told me, don't go to that trailer, and I avoided it. I didn't want to see them, I wanted to talk to the people that live there, that's the ones I'm concerned with. You say this twenty-two thousand, we're giving you a break, ten percent, that's a heck of a deal with all the people that want taxes on, and the government's going to say, you're paying all of it, unless you get some legal group that can help you out. We're asking ten percent is all we're asking, not the two hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars, guys, I remember the figure. We're asking for just twenty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, it's not going to make the city rich. You talk about broken water lines, welcome to the city of Hillsdale, we have them all over the place. We lose water everywhere, we're trying to repair it as we go. Well, tell us the people that are getting specialist assessed, we're just going to say, we're going to give you guys a break while they're going to pay for theirs. That is not fair to them, the people that live in the city of Hillsdale, that have been here all their lives. You come in, you buy this, ask what for, make, fix it up, or maybe make a profit, or turn it, I don't know. But I really don't care, but what I saw does disturb me. And that's where I stand, pay your twenty-two thousand dollars is where I would go. That's my opinion, thank you.
Councilman Palladino?
What's your annual capital investment?
So to date, uh, since we've taken over the community, we've invested roughly about one point one million and some change into the property.
Five hundred fifty thousand dollars a year?
Sure, for the last couple of years.
Okay.
In all of them, or just this part?
Do you have an idea of what the capital outlay was of the previous owner?
Um, now we all go back to financials.
So we could potentially, I don't, I don't know if anyone else is open to this, but we could potentially draw up an agreement, for, for how long can we hold this two hundred and twenty thousand dollars as leverage?
Well, okay, so if you're working out a, any type of enforceable contract, because that's what a sudden agreement would be, would be a contract, there's consideration that goes each way, right? So in effect, consideration is what each side is giving the other side value to get the deed. If, if you're just, like, the city is just going to reduce it and not require anything, well, the city's not really getting any consideration, but that's a issue of the city. But you could, as part of the consideration, ask that the park do certain things, showing you that they are investing funds. And it would be based upon whatever kind of agreement we reached with the park, as to how long they have to make those investments, how much it is they plan to invest every year, and then you would just look to see, are they meeting those? Because that's what they've agreed to do, in effect, in exchange for receiving the benefit of that reduction from the civil fine.
Okay, thank you, I, I'm fine with levying the fine, but I don't see why we wouldn't use this as some sort of leverage, that's my perspective. Um, it doesn't seem like there's any support for that around the table, but.
Are there any other complaints, if Councilman Soha?
Um, I mean, it's unfortunate that the fine schedule is so hefty, that that was the bureaucrats up in Lansing, that in their collective wisdom, it's, it's challenging, I mean, I typically despise property taxes, and, uh, but that's the way that the world works right now. These fines are, they're exorbitant, but unfortunately, you know, ignorance isn't bliss in this occasion.
Well, that's, that's also the stick by which they get people to make sure that they comply, because otherwise, you have to chase them around with like tax.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I think, um, in this circumstance, the city's being extremely generous, and trying to extend an olive branch to you, um, without it being, I mean, twenty-two grand is, is a burden, but it's not a two hundred thousand dollar burden, so that's significant. And I appreciate what you're doing to make the park a better place, I, I believe that you're, you have integrity there. Um, I hope to see it improve, I, I too delivered pizza there a few years ago and saw some pretty questionable structures. And so I would like, and I've seen you, I think you brought in at least three new trailers?
There's five.
Five new trailers, and, and so I appreciate that, I think that's a welcome addition. And, um, I hope this, uh, sting isn't too, isn't too harsh, but I, I did have a question for the city manager, and I'm just reminded of it. In the, I can't imagine we're sending out a tax bill that doesn't have this as a law item.
This is actually self-reporting. So this does not go on a tax, tax bill. Um, when we, when we had, uh, identified the issue, we had tried to reach out to them, and I think the letter, the, I mean, one of the initial letters is in there. Uh, yeah, from January twenty-two, and then, uh, uh, I think we had some emails that there was some communication.
Just so I can clear this that quickly, it's not part of the general property tax act. It's a separate statute that relates to mobile home parks, and part of the issue is because they assess another number of occupied coaches that month, it has to rely on the self-reporting of the trailer park, because there's no way that the municipality would have to know when I'm going there or even check it, so that's why they put that away.
And so the numbers, the spreadsheet are what they, they reported, subsequently reported to us, the seventy fours, um, down to eighty-seven.
If I could go over to just clarify the issue on the mobile home park or the mobile home tax. So Michigan is one of the only states that charges the, the operator, the owner, uh, a tax on the mobile home. Typically, the homeowner will pay the tax on that home based on an assessment that's given to them from the local processor's office for kind of mobile home. So like, we pay the taxes on the mobile home, the residents don't pay the taxes in the state of Michigan.
This has been a very interesting situation. I, uh, I mean, like I said, I'd honestly rather see the money go into the park, I'm inclined to, whatever council wants to do. It is, there are some places in rough shape over there, without a doubt, I've been in there quite a few times, but I can think of places in town that are in worse shape than that. Um, so I'd like to, would rather see, uh, some money going, that money going to it for the residents that live over there, because there's several hundred of our constituents that live in that. You know, a lot of people are frustrated about getting their water bills, um, over there broken up into, uh, spread out evenly over the residents, when that happened, I got a lot of complaints about that, so, um, we do need to move along. I do think that the twenty thousand dollars is a very generous offer, if we are going to continue with the fine, it is only ten percent, so. I'm on the fence either way, I'm, I'm inclined to go with whatever council, uh, would like to go with, but if I was given my own choice, I'd rather see that money put into the trailer park. My thinking, Councilman Palladino?
Last question, do you have a proposal for us, or anything?
As far as.
If we, if we canceled the fine, you put in X amount of money, anything like that?
I don't have one today, but I, but I would have one that I can, you know, have at your guys' hands within a week, or your next meeting, whatever you guys would prefer on that. But I have various stuff on the document right now for us to get done, and I can definitely apply that to that, or I would welcome also suggestions of things that you guys have seen, Councilman Sharp, I know you've been out there, uh, if there were things that were identified that were issues, I mean, I would take that consideration as well.
Would you, Mayor?
Oh.
Would we consider a motion to table, will we consider that, or there's none?
I would.
I would. Councilman Mayor?
Well, so if, because the motion will be to pay the twenty-two thousand.
One hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Okay, um, and so if we vote against it, then the two hundred and twenty-one thousand is back on the table. Is it, I mean, if we're voting.
No, we don't have to do that.
Well, we don't have to, but that would be currently under law, what they would have, if we voted against the motion to reduce it to the ten percent.
Theoretically.
Yes, think of it this way, um, you and I are in a contract, and, um, under the contract, you're supposed to pay me ten thousand dollars, and I owe ten thousand dollars. Uh, you don't pay me the ten thousand dollars, you see, gee, Tom, I don't have ten thousand dollars, what can we do? And I come in and say, okay, here's what I'll, I'll offer, you only have to pay me seven thousand dollars in exchange for X, Y and Z. We are into a little settlement agreement that says that, right? So there are two parts to this, you could have a motion that simply said, we're going to reduce the fine down to the amount that's proposed, and that be that, and if you approve that, that's it. There's nothing that you get back out of the, the mobile home park, they don't have to do anything, you just told them, you're going to have to pay. If you wanted them to have to give something in exchange for getting that reduction by agreeing that they're going to do certain things for the trailer park, um, then what you would do for that is you would have that kind of settlement agreement I talked about, where you'd say, we're giving you this reduction in civil fines down to this much, and in exchange, you're going to bring over X, Y and Z, we have an agreement that gets approved by you. Park would approve it, assuming, you know, we can negotiate out what they agree they're going to do, and everybody signs, and now we've got something that says what everybody's going to do, right? You couldn't do that tonight, because you don't have the proposal from the park, as to what it is they propose to do, so that you could look and determine if that's good enough, or if you want to ask for something more, or different, right? So in effect, what you're doing is you're negotiating a settlement. It could just be that you're just going to give them the benefit of a ninety percent reduction in civil fine, because you think that that's too much, and under the circumstances, you decide to kind of break, right? Or you could decide, I'm going to use this as a negotiation, I'm going to get something in return for the fact that the city's going to knock off this ninety percent of the fine, and, you know, in that case, we're going to negotiate, negotiate with the terms of that, and put that in the form of a agreement that everyone can approve and sign.
Thank you for that information, Tom. Okay, I'm ready.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion that they pay of two hundred, or two, two, what was it, twenty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, we're reducing it down ten percent, that's a hell of a deal for them, and that's where I'm going to stand, I make that motion.
Second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Morrissey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Soha?
No.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Mayor?
No.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
No.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Palladino?
No.
Pratt?
No.
And Sharp?
Yes.
Four to five that fails.
Fuck, no. So now we're going to have a trailer park. Now we have eleven of them.
Now they have, now we're back to two hundred and some thousand dollars?
Yeah.
I need clarification where we're at, my understanding was, if this does not pass, now they owe two hundred and twenty-two thousand some odd dollars. That's what we just voted for, correct?
Well, I think we're back in the negotiating table.
Why?
Only if you want to.
Why? You, you pay, you got your vote, why would you negotiate again, we just gave it to you? We just gave it to you, why, you negotiate to get what you want, you just had the vote, two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, that's what they owe. Correct if I'm wrong.
Well, that's what they owe before they came up here, so I guess, yes, that's what they still owe, technically, yes, that would be true. Councilman Mayor?
I, I think, uh, my note vote on that was more about, uh, because since they be, became knowledgeable of their situation, that, that the taxes are current, all the property taxes are current. What, and, uh, because of what John said, is in other states, the actually, the tenants at the trailer parks pay this fee. Except in the state of Michigan, it's paid by the trailer park owners. And actually, they don't send out any notification of this taxes due. And it's on the, uh, responsibility of the trailer park owners to self-report and tell the city how many that they weren't aware of. Now, my only thing is that we can come back with another agreement, that, because bottom line, that two hundred and twenty-one thousand, the bulk of it, is from civil infraction. It's, it's not from the unpaid portion.
I understand what you're saying, but we discussed that, what we said was ignorance of the law doesn't excuse you. We have a proposal here for reducing it down to ten percent, it was defeated, they owe us two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars and eighty-nine, not eighty, eight hundred and ninety dollars. We just rejected this ten percent reduction, we don't go back and renegotiate, get something else, the deal's done.
So to be clear, Tony, the, the two hundred and twenty-one thousand is all civil fine?
Yeah.
It's all so. And, and my whole thing was that, um, they paid the tax, okay. The twenty-two thousand one eighty-nine, ten percent of the total fine is, you know, you'd say, okay, that's a great deal. Uh, my whole point was that, because this council, or, we could not tell as far as our, because we can't forgive the fees, the interest, and the late fees, and, and that was where I was coming, what is that amount? We, as a council, we weren't given that. So mine was based on the ignorance, but I'm thinking that twenty-two one eighty-nine could be, I mean, we have, we could have said five thousand. And in, in fact, as a council, after all this discussion, I don't know why, you know, you'd make another motion that say, make it to five thousand, so.
But when do you stop negotiating till you get everybody what they want? We had the proposal, we had the discussion, we had the debate, and this was rejected. So we go do it again, and again, and again, until you get what you want, Gary goes to he wants, no, it's done, it's over.
No, my, my, my.
You can't keep bringing it back.
You, actually, you, you can, you can.
In the meantime, the trailer park doesn't get anything done while we're playing games with, going through dollar figures, trying to come up with something that says they're going to do this. That is my concern, we are got, we've just done something bizarre here, I'll say that. I mean, that's one thing about this council, there's no bobbleheads here. That, I would like to make a proposal, that they come back with a proposal on how they're going to spend the two hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars into that park in the next eighteen months.
I'd say in a year.
We give them, whatever, we get a short time, but they tell us how they're going to spend that money in their park. That's, that's what I want to see in the next two weeks.
Councilman Soha?
Just for clarification, when somebody makes a proposal, a motion, and it's seconded, isn't there the opportunity for further discussion?
I'm technically sure, but you should probably vote it out there.
I understand, but as I recall, you have in the past.
I have in the past, when people still have things to say.
One of the reasons I voted no was because Councilman Palladino had something to say after the motion was set forward, and based on that precedent.
Guys, we're.
No, I, I just wanted to, some clarification, because I, I don't think we were done, and I think sometimes we rush to conclude things at this council before the conversation is complete.
I, I would agree with that statement, but we're the final arbiters on this, and this is not, this is okay, we're going to be all right. I think the clear direction is, um, that we would like to see the money put into the park, or we would like to come back in a couple of weeks with some sort of, uh, some sort of proposal from you, or.
Did you make a motion?
Yes, I did, I want a motion to what, how they're going to spend. Yes, I did. I want a motion to what, how they're gonna spend two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in that park, not ten percent. We, this deal's over. It's a brand new deal for re-dealing.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Stuccio, and this is just asking them to show how they're going to spend.
Show us a proposal, how they plan on spending this two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in that park.
Time for you.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Stuccio, seconded by Councilman Palladino. Yes, Councilman Soha.
When would they have to deliver this?
Two weeks? A next council?
Is that a week?
A week?
What's, what's reasonable?
Yeah.
So I, I guess, I mean, as far as getting a proposal together, I mean, I can get you something within a couple of weeks. I can get you by your next council meeting.
Okay, that's fair.
The number that, at two hundred and fourteen, I mean, just in all fairness, you know, we've, we've put the majority of our money into this for the last two years. So I mean, now we're, now we're coming back for another, you know, quarter million dollars to put into it. I guess that's, that's a drastically different number than what was originally uh, brought to the table.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Sharp.
Thank you.
But you didn't have a problem raising the rents three times since you've owned it. So I'm just gonna put that all on the table too.
Right now I have a motion on the floor. Did you have something to add, Councilman Soha?
I would rather than, unfortunately, the assessment's been assessed. And I would rather you reinvest that money into the park. And um, show us how you're gonna do that than it come into the city's coffers and it seems like we're just, you know, cracking away.
Yeah, I don't wanna punish him because things went some lesser way.
Do our votes mean anything? When we pass or reject, do they mean anything?
Well, they do, and that's why we, we made this new amendment.
Yeah.
To, to have, given the opportunity to spend the money in the park.
So let me remember this. The motion on the floor is to see how they will s- uh, spend a specific number of dollars in the park.
Full fine, the full fine. We rejected the ten percent, so it goes back to the full fine. So my proposal, my request, is what their proposal looks like to spend that two hundred and some thousand dollars in a short period of time.
Two hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety dollars.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Stuccio, seconded by Councilman Palladino. Was that correct? Tony, did you have something to add?
Yeah, just, I don't see why all of a sudden we're coming down to two options. We either give them the twenty-two, the ninety percent, or they pay the full fine. There's many more options.
No, I agree with that.
And, and, and to me, this is kind of a, an emotional.
Yes.
Triggered thing. I mean, because there is questions that weren't answered, uh, as far as what the city was able to do. And it's, well, this is what it's gonna be, and because we dissented, now we're gonna go back and do some, and I find it uh, I don't, I don't find it really in good faith.
It's not how councils should do business.
Bring another vote.
Well, we've got a motion on the floor to second, so we need to vote on that, gentlemen. And then after that, we can continue this discussion. Col- Mr. Mackey.
So just, just uh, so everyone's clear, the twenty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars came from discussions in the finance committee um, about the, the total um, civil fine penalties. And, you know, because the question was posed to us, you know, if we had an offer, so this was our offer uh, coming from the finance committee at that time. That wasn't acceptable um, to John's company at that time. Um, so I basically said to him, he needed to come to the finance committee and this board to plead his case if he wanted something different than what we had proposed. So that's why. But it did go through the finance committee um, discussion.
Just to be clear, we did not recommend it either.
You didn't recommend, make a recommendation here today, but the twenty, you know, the ten percent of the twenty-two thousand, one eighty-nine was what our original offer was for, through the committee.
Yes, we were just reaffirming it, and um, that was where we were standing on it.
Councilman Mayor.
Okay, per the uh, agenda item, recommendation from the finance, here from the finance committee and MHP to decide the direct, the direction the city would like to go in settling the past due monthly lot payments, penalties, and interest. And what we're basically presented with now, now we're either gonna give them the ninety percent off or we're gonna charge it full. So that's just what the.
I would like to clarify that. No, that's not correct. I just gave my motion what I wanna see. You have a motion? Put it on the table, we'll vote for it.
We've got a motion on the floor from Councilman Stuccio, seconded by Councilman Palladino. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Stuccio?
Yes.
Vera?
No.
Wolfram?
I'm staying.
You can't abstain here, you gotta vote.
No.
You're, you're compelled to vote right now.
Okay, I'll vote.
Yes.
Mayor Safford?
No.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Palladino?
Yes.
Pratt?
No.
Sharp?
Oh, yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Six, six, four passes.
It's gotta be six.
Six, three.
Six, three, excuse me. Yes, six passes.
Okay, so, see, yep, we'll see you in a couple of weeks, uh.
How, how would you like the proposal?
Do the best you got.
Theoretically, improvements that you could make to the park in the amount of two hundred and some thousand dollars. Whatever it was. Uh, yeah, you have, we're excited eighteen months, is what we're excited. And that was the motion.
John, if it's possible, uh, our agendas start coming together on uh, the eleventh, on the eleventh, for the meeting on the sixteenth. So if it's possible to get us something by the eleventh.
So is it possible to like, uh, submit the proposal and then, cause I live in the area, so to get back here to be, to attend, may not be feasible in two weeks, but to get you a proposal, uh, would, would be no issue?
That's good. That's fair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move out of new business into miscellaneous reports. We've got two proclamations tonight. The first one is pregnancy and infant loss remembrance day. This is an official proclamation. Whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, U.S. President Ronald Reagan declared October as a month to recognize the unique grief of bereaved parents in an effort to demonstrate support to the many families who have suffered such tragic loss. Whereas pregnancy and infant loss is such a common occurrence, one that is not usually recognized and rarely acknowledged. Whereas one in four women will lose a baby during pregnancy delivery or infancy. Whereas this devastating tragedy often occurs suddenly without warning as a result of miscarriage, stillbirth, preterm birth, sudden infant death syndrome, accident, or other causes or complications. And whereas increased awareness of the causes and impacts surrounding pregnancy and infant loss may lead to a greater understanding, support, and resources in communities across the United States. And whereas in two thousand and two, the fifteenth day of October Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day campaign began and is recognized amongst the United States and in many other jurisdictions around the world as a day of remembrance and awareness of pregnancy and infant loss, where many participate in the international wave of light by lighting the candle at seven P.M. local time to honor all babies gone too soon. And whereas on October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, the Hillsdale Hospital will hold their sixteen-day new remembrance walk at Owens Memorial Park, bobbies at one P.M. for parents and families to remember the lives gone too soon. And whereas we recognize and acknowledge the unique grief of bereaved parents of pregnancy and, pregnancy and infant loss. And whereas we demonstrate our support for the many families affected by such loss. Now therefore, I, Adam Elstock, for mayor of the city of Hillsdale, Michigan, do hereby proclaim October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day in the city of Hillsdale and encourage parents and caregivers and all residents to become educated in fa- opportunities to prevent pregnancy and infant loss and support bereaved families when prevention is not possible. And the next proclamation is Public Power Week. Whereas the city of Hillsdale places high value on the benefits of local control of utility services and therefore operates a community-owned, not-for-profit electric utility. Whereas we are customers and owners of the Hillsdale Board of Public Utilities and have a direct say in utility operations and policies. Whereas Hillsdale Board of Public Utilities provides our homes, businesses, farms, social service, and local government agencies with safe, reliable, and efficient electricity and employs sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at not-for-profit rates. Whereas the Hillsdale Board of Public Utilities is a valuable co- community asset that contributes to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, economic development, and safety awareness. Whereas the Hillsdale Board of Public Utilities is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many consumer protections and continues to make our community a better place to live and work and contributes to a sustainable environment. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Hillsdale Board of Public Utilities will continue to work to bring safe, reliable electricity to community homes and businesses just as it has since eighteen ninety-two, the year when the utility was created to serve all citizens of the city of Hillsdale. And be it further resolved, that the week of October first through seventh be designated Public Power Week to recognize Hillsdale Board of Public Utilities for its contributions to the community and to educate customer owners, policymakers, and employers on the benefits of public power. Be it further resolved that our community joins hands with more than two thousand other public power systems in the United States in the celebration of public power, which invests for consumers, business, the community, and the nation. Now therefore, I, Adam Elstock, for mayor of the city of Hillsdale, do recognize the week of October first through October seventh as Public Power Week, a week-long celebration of Hillsdale Board of Public Utilities' year-round service to the city of Hillsdale. We've got no appointments, so we'll open up the podium to general public comment. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please limit your trips to one of the podium, and you may speak on whatever your hearts so desires. The podium is now open. Seeing no public comment, we'll close the podium, move into city manager's part. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple, couple of things to mention. Um, this is in addition for Public Power Week activities, so community members are invited to stop by the VPU offices this week to sign up for drawings to win free household energy efficiency kit. So if their residents are out and about, uh, or paying their bills, they can sign up for that. Additionally, the VPU is running a trivia contest on their Facebook page to test our community's knowledge of our very own public power utility. A new trivia question will be posted on the VPU's Facebook page at twelve-thirty P.M. Monday through Friday. The first person to comment on the post with the correct answer won some VPU branded goodies. Hills, Hillsdale Academy, fourth grader Ellie Maori was the winner of the VPU's Public Power Week coloring contest. A fifty-dollar gift card was donated from the MMVA, Michigan Municipal Electric Association, so she will receive that and her artwork will be displayed uh, in the, uh, their Currents magazine and the VPU lobby. Moving on to another item, uh, powered by pink competition through the month of October, the city of Hillsdale has participated in a friendly competition between communities that are MSCPA members, so our energy uh, group, uh, which consists of Hillsdale, Coldwater, Marshall, and Clinton. There will be a link on our Facebook page where folks can donate online or make cash donations for breast cancer awareness. So we're competing. Um, and if, if you look on the, the Facebook page, you'll see a picture of the group, uh, of MSCPA all in pink. The funny thing was, is not everyone in that photo was originally in pink, but they're pretty good at photoshopping that stuff now and made everyone at pink. Um, so um, again, there's a, a link on the city's Facebook uh, page to make those donations. Um, as was mentioned earlier, we have, on October seventh and eighth, we have the, the um, train event, which will have uh, this theme on, on both days, uh, the farmer's market Saturday, art show, uh, at the Dawn Theater, Feather Studio, Studio Forty-two, throughout the weekend, live music. Uh, and many of the businesses and everyone else will be open, so another tremendous event by the local community. I did put in front of all your spots, this is kind of a fact sheet from the Michigan Municipal League. I know we were talking about fees and uh, immigrants to closing roads and barricades and such. Um, but on the second page of this, it actually denotes public celebrations and events, which are primarily the things that we're talking about with the, the parades and closing the streets and such. So that address, the highlighted section kind of addresses that, and I also put the section from municipal, the municipal code. Their, uh, state statute allows for certain things to be, to, there's some flexibility, but mo- they're basically Armadis Day, Independence Day, Memorial Day, um, Diamond Jubilee, Centen- Centennial, and those type things. Just events from local groups and such don't necessarily classify under uh, the exemptions provided for public celebrations and events. So um, and then just to clarify, with the, the fee schedule that was submitted, actually, um, that, quite a bit of work ethic went into that, where they actually wrote down each of those events to see how much it was costing, the DPS, uh, how much barricades, how much in personnel cost. And then we checked with our neighbors like Marshall and others, what they were charging. So um, we tried, basically, didn't try, you know, we, we weren't trying to make money, but we were trying to cover the costs of the city because some people don't support those events. And we're using, we would be using their tax dollars to pay for events that they don't necessarily support, so. So that being said, um, I think unless there's questions, um, I believe we're at that.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave? No questions for Dave? All right, we'll move on. Council comment? Anybody have anything? Motion to adjourn? Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Soha. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. It is adjourned.